And I'll let you know. Abel, you're all set to start.
All right. Thank you very much. Hello, everyone. Welcome to this second budget hearing. It is Thursday, April 16th. Time is 7:00 PM. This is a joint meeting between South Kingstown Town Council and the South Kingstown School Committee. Our first order of business is the pledge to the flag. So I would ask folks to mute yourselves while. Can you recite the pledge for us, Susan?
There you are. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Susan. And would you please take the ring?
Council President Collins?
Here.
Council Vice President De Cruz?
Here.
Councilwoman Kelso?
Here.
Councilman MacIntyre?
Here.
And Councilman Veely?
Here.
All members are present.
Thank you. And again, just like last night, I would ask that all the members from the school committee introduce themselves.
Stephanie Cantor is here.
The school committee is here.
Michelle Brusso, school committee is here.
J.C. Northup, school committee is here.
Emily Comiskey, school committee is here.
All right. Thank you. So again, for folks who weren't on the meeting yesterday, not everyone can see us here. They don't have access to the online Zoom meeting. So they might be calling in through their phones. So just introduce yourself when you have a point to make or a question to ask. And we had a great discussion last night, I thought. Rob, great job laying things out. Tonight, Rob, I think you might have some answers to some questions that were raised last night. And then I believe the superintendent has a short presentation to make before we get into the general discussion. So, Rob, if you want to start it off, that'd be great.
That's great. I'm gonna just quickly do a screen and run through some of the questions that came up last night. I think we've got most of the answers to the questions that the council had posed. We're still working through a couple of them, and we'll talk about that as we get through this. So. All right. So the council and the committee will remember that we had made six recommendations last night. What I'm going to do is go through each of these six recommendations and identify for the council the outstanding work to be done, or in a couple of cases, provide language that puts more detail to the recommendations. With the first recommendation, stick to the charter mandated budget schedule. There's no amendment necessary to the preliminary budget. However, there are two outstanding questions. The first is, does the council want to stick to that schedule and adopt the final budget on April 27? And the second question is, given that these virtual public hearings are sort of a new thing for us, does the council, and I suppose the council, based on its conversations and input from the public, does the public feel that they've had a sufficient opportunity in this new format to participate in the design of the budget? Those are really just the two questions that have to be addressed, and I just point them out to the council because we do need to come to some resolution of those two questions. With regard to the recommendation for an amendment to ensure that there is no tax increase for FY '20 and '21, we've put together a, we've put together language for such an amendment. It's not a complicated amendment. It simply says that the total cost of healthcare and dental benefits provided for active employees in the non-school departments is reduced by $200,000. And the portion of the undesignated fund balance within the municipal general fund committed to payment for FY '20 and '21 program operations is increased from $500,000, which is what is in the primary, the preliminarily adopted budget to 1.450, 1.4 million, $1,450,000. Again, these are just, this is just recommended language. We just want the council to have something to sort of think about as you move toward final adoption. The manager's budget amendment recommendation number three was that we parse the property tax transfer into more than one payment. When we spoke about it last night, and when we were puzzling through this with the school department last week, the idea was that we wanted to be additive. We wanted to start with ASUM and then go up from there if conditions were met. Trying to operationalize that proved to be a little bit more difficult than we, we liked, particularly because the schools are very concerned that we not end up with a sort of arbitrary date cutoff situation. So what we've done here, and I shared this with the superintendent and Mary Ann this afternoon, what we've done here is we've sort of flipped the, the concept a little bit and said, look, if the schools can certify that they're going to need school buses for the entire year, then the amount that the council deems appropriate, here the placeholder is a 2% increase, will be provided to the schools at that time, at, at the beginning of the year, so that they've got the funding for the entire bus program. And then we ratchet that down. If the schools aren't running buses in September, you take $109,000 off. If they're not running them again in October, you roll it down another $109,000, to the point where at the end of the year, if there's only a need for buses in June, they would get $109,000 as, as the property tax transfer. So it's a, it achieves the same objective that we were aiming at. It does it in a slightly different way. Recognizes that the baseline is last year's property tax transfer, and then identifies a target at the beginning and rolls down contingent upon the need for buses. With regard to the recommendation on number four, that the municipal debt service assumptions built into the budget be continued, but that we not actually go out, there's no amendment that would be needed for the, the budget itself, but we do need some, some guidance. And in fact, there'll have to be a decision by the council on whether or not the referendum questions will go on the ballot. That's not really a budget issue, but I pointed out because it is one of the things that we had talked about last night. Now, with regard to the recommendation that we establish a program for the waiver of interest and penalties for unemployed residents, residents who are suffering because of the coronavirus event. I told you last night that we were working with the town solicitor to get a memo put together, and we were trying to figure out what the limitations on the town's authority are. It turns out with regard to the waiver of interest, the state legislature has retained all of the authority. They've not delegated general authority to the municipalities through the home rule provisions. And the state legislature has identified when we can provide interest relief, waiver on interest to property owners. These are the conditions. So if we were to do a program designed to waive interest, it would have to have these characteristics. It would have to be an ordinance. The property that is the subject of the waiver would have to be a residence and would have to be the taxpayer's residence for the five years immediately preceding the tax payment that is overdue. The waiver has to be in writing. It has to be signed. It has to be dated by the taxpayer. There has to have been five years of consecutive timely payments made by the taxpayer. And the bill for the overdue tax payment has to have been issued within the last two years. Finally, we cannot issue waivers for more than $500 per the state statute. So we can do something in this area, but we're constrained. It cannot just be based on unemployment status alone. It has to be this set of criteria that we could put in place. And with regard to the question of whether or not we can sort of either abate or provide some sort of deferment of payments on commercial properties, the answer is no. The town solicitor has advised us that the town would need specific enabling legislation to allow for the deferment of commercial property tax payments. Two Rhode Island municipalities have sought and have been granted that specific authority. We are not one of them. So we would actually have to go to the state legislature and seek the authority to defer commercial property tax payments. So that's where we are. I think that addresses all of the questions that the council had put forward. And obviously, that's a very cursory explanation of each of them, but it does give us a starting point for our discussions beyond that. There was also a question posed last night by a member of the, by a member of the public who wanted to know what the procedure is going to be for signatures. And this is the procedure that I think pending Mike's final approval makes sense. We will take an original petition with an original signature. We'll take a photocopy of a petition with an original signature, or we'll take an electronic copy in JPG, GIF, or PDF format. We can't be messing with weird formats that, that we don't have the software to read. But if it's, you know, one of the standard JPG, GIF, or PDF, the petition form has to include the signature of the, the person signing the petition, and we need a, an address and a phone number to verify that the mark they've put on that electronic form was intended to evidence that they, serve as evidence that they support the petition. The signatures need not be collected or consolidated onto a single form, but the person submitting the petition will have to give us all of the 25 copies that have 25 different signatures at once, so that we're not, you know, trying to keep track of everything as it comes in. It will be the responsibility of the petitioner to make sure that the forms are delivered concurrently. So that's, I think, all of the major questions we had last night. If I've missed something, please let me know.
Thanks, Rob. It's great to have those answers. This is Abel speaking. I forgot to mention one thing at the start. That is, last night, folks were typing in questions on sort of policy into the Q and A screen. Tonight, I'd like to ask people to hold those questions for the second portion when we're opening up for public comment. If you have a technical concern about accessing the meeting, we'd be happy to answer that question via the Q and A. If you absolutely are petrified of having your voice heard over the, over the meeting here online, and you feel like you need to type your policy question into that bar there, do identify yourself by name. So that's a part of the public hearing process. Okay, Linda, you had some things that you wanted to share, I believe.
Thank you. I'm, I'm going to try to share, I'm going to share my screen, but if you could let me know if this isn't working, I would appreciate it. Are you able to see?
Yes.
Thank you. So this is Linda Savistano, the superintendent for the school department. Um, I was hoping tonight to be able to, yeah, I was hoping tonight to just quickly share, I'm going to quickly do this. I understand that the goal tonight is for the public, and I honor that, but I wanted to follow up with, I guess I, I felt obligated. We, I owed, we owed information to you all, so I just wanted to quickly share that. The other piece is that last night, we talked an awful lot about the situation that we are all in and the world we live in today. Our school department looks very different today than it did four, five weeks ago. So I just wanted to give a brief overview of that. We did an in-depth overview at our school committee meeting on Tuesday, but I just wanted to walk through and, and, and share that so that folks maybe have a little bit of a better understanding. But first, just quickly, on our proposed budget, I wanted to share, we had had a question proposed to us from you all, asking if we had been reduced or if we were not fully funded, what, um, what would we do? What would our response be? And I had answered that we would be looking at our focus areas, and those are the areas that we would not be enhancing or growing or, or able to move forward with. On, on the, at the school committee meeting, I had shared with them what that looked like. So this, this is linked off of our website, off of the page where we have our budget information in the presentation in the report. So the focus areas, this was a screen you had seen in this, in the original presentation. But if we pull out these focus areas and we tie dollars to them, this gives a little bit more of an idea of the dollars associated. But if we, and then if we unpack what that means, because we're talking about programmatic impacts. So this, this is color-coded by those areas. And so I'm not going to kind of go, I'm not going to go line by line. This document is available. I'm happy to send, I can send the link to Rob too, so you have the, this information. But this gives the line by line by the program of what would be, what would specifically be impacted. And then, in addition, the narrative to better describe that impact is in this document as well. So I understand that since we've started this work and peeling it back, that the world has changed and continues to change. But again, originally asked, with the programs peeling them back, what would be the impact? What would we see happening as we move forward if we were, if we were not funded this, um, this is, these are the areas. And the, the next piece I wanted to quickly walk through is the, um, last night, we were referring and talking a lot about the impact of COVID-19 on, on our learning community in terms of our operations and economy. But I just wanted, I guess, in the back of my mind, the whole time, I was thinking about kind of an overlap of different areas, while there absolutely is an economic impact to the larger community and of course, at the school level, and, and it, the impact goes both ways. There of course is a health and safety and a student learning impact. So I was hoping tonight, just to quickly walk you through how we've needed to reinvent ourselves. And I'm just sharing, we use norms when we're online. So these are just our kind of standard norms that we use across the district. And, and we started really at the end of February, knowing that we had to make changes. We were already making changes in the school department and doing weekly and sometimes multiple, multiple times a week conference calls with the, with Dr. Nicole Alexander Scott, and who was really keeping the superintendents up to date. During that process, we were advised, the beginning of March, to have a virtual learning plan in place. That plan needs to be approved by the Department of Ed. It is not a new process. It's not a new understanding. The Department of Ed has had this since 2017, where we could have applied to be approved for a virtual learning plan. We didn't, no district in the, in the state had an approved virtual learning plan as of March, the beginning of March, 2020. So we were all working on these. So it's not anything, there's nothing to be said that we didn't already have one. Historically, that plan would have given us three days in the event of snow or an emergency. So we were working on our plan where we have grounded, we have grounded everything in our academics 21st century, but at the heartbeat, really, the, also understanding the social emotional needs of our children during, during a crisis in our lives. And these core principles are really the foundation. So making sure, our number one goal was making sure that our children all had a human connection with their teachers, real life, um, live human connection with our, their teachers every day. Maybe not 60-minute classes, 90-minute classes, maybe only 10-minute morning meeting, but that they have that human connection. And then in addition, we asked that we were breaking, learning down to smaller chunks, on being clear about the expectations for that online participation and providing immediate frequent feedback for children. Our many, our learning management platforms are Seesaw and Zoom for our pre-ked to. And then we use Google Classroom and Google Meet for our grades three through 12. We'll be expanding the use of Zoom for all grade levels. Our focus areas, the areas that we had to really show Department of Ed, that we had a strong foundation before they would approve us, was showing that we had a strong leadership team and approval from all many different facets. Union leadership had to agree with us. School committee needed to support the plan. Of course, curriculum and instruction, support staff, how are we using all of our staff? Knowing that we had the proper supports in place, a help desk, for example, and that we were still going to be able to have food services. That was part of our plan. And so quickly, our virtual learning plan is available on our website. It's in a binder format, if you will, digitally. But ultimately, this is the document that we did have to support, and we ended up authoring and then submitted to the Department of Education by the 19th. In addition, I just wanted to share, we also did a support staff contingency plan. So this kind of reinvents our staff. So our staff had, their life has changed dramatically for many of us, but we've documented that. We also, as part of this, have logs that we maintain and manage so that we have, for every building level, are documenting what different assignments for different folks are. Also, I'm not going to go through the, the entire plan, but I just want to share, this is here. It's available. It's on the website. There are different kinds of educational exemplars by level. Folks can see. So that's available for us. And then, this is tomorrow. We have a professional development day where we're really focusing on our quality versus quantity from an educational perspective and rethinking how we assess. Because I don't want a pass/fail environment. Some districts feel comfortable with that. I don't. I want to honor the hard, hard work, the heavy lift that we've done. And so we're working to really take a good, hard look at our learning and how we can pull out the most important aspects and how we'll have our children show that they, what, how they've learned in different ways than maybe we're used to. So ultimately, the Department of Ed did recognize our plan. I was blessed to have a very strong team work around the clock on our plan and continue. We continue to meet every single day. Met this morning still. So our, the Department of Ed ultimately recognized our plan as one of the most comprehensive. This is exactly from them. Plan is one of the most comprehensive, that we would be well-positioned at the time, you know, the first couple of days that they, we weren't sure. We were, we knew we had two weeks ahead of us. Now we know we have till, you know, the beginning of May ahead of us. That's kind of the window they've given us. And then did ask if they could use our plan as, and pieces of it as the information examples and as best practice. And then just kind of a quick overview, we, right now, we have 2,572 laptops out in the, in the town that we're supporting, managing anybody who needed a device. In the elementaries, we have been surveying and providing them. And then our, we have assigned laptops for grades five through 12. We have a help desk that's available, and we function in the same timeframe as the food services. So that eight to nine thirty, 11:30 to one, we are swapping laptops that give anybody a problem. There is, of course, a responsibility for frequent communication in a very different format still. We don't have that face-to-face at all. So the, every week, I send out from the district weekly updates. There are also building level updates that are going out. Everything's posted on our website. And then just to kind of point out, last night, we were talking, we spoke a lot about the grab-and-go breakfast and lunch that we offer. And so reminders for that are, are an example of the kind of communication that goes out. And also this week, this is this week's update. We gave the menu for the week as well. And then moving forward, this is the kind of, I'm going to wrap up, but this is, these are the pieces that we are working on right now that are hard. The heart really, the whole piece has been a heavy lift, but ultimately, these are the pieces that rose to the top. The quality over quantity, really thinking about what that virtual learning looks like and pulling out the most impactful pieces for our children. Showing different ways of your learning. It doesn't need to be the paper pencil 25 problems, but we need to rethink what student evidence looks like. Specialized instruction, the special education. I know we talked a little bit last night about, Rob had mentioned the compensatory time and how we, we, we know that that's going to be something that we're going to owe, because it is a challenge for us to, with fidelity, have the same level of services that we can always provide. Just, I mean, simply think occupational therapy, physical therapy. How, you know, that's, does not look the same way it did four or five weeks ago. Interventions for children who are not at grade level with reading or, or math or social emotional interventions that we provide, we try. We do the best we can virtually, but it is just the core curriculum, just the foundational, reinventing that, and then now reinventing those extra layers of support. I think we're going to owe a bit of compensatory time, if you will, on that aspect as well. We'll have some gaps that we'll need to work with. Extended school year, summer programming, we, again, we're at a point of uncertainty around that, even if school was allowed to be opened. And that today's message from the governor was different from it was, from the way it was yesterday, about what our future would look like. So we're still unsure what will be allowed. But even if it was allowed, we know those students that use the extended school year, what we call ESY, are our most vulnerable population, and we are somewhat concerned about pulling them back first, if allowed, into, if we don't finish out the school year in brick and mortar, but pulling them back into brick and mortar in the summer. So that's a piece where still is under kind of a magnifying glass. And then of course, the spring events, the large, so critical, important, um, spring events. Graduations, proms, celebrations. spring events, graduations, proms, celebrations, rethinking those pieces. That's, that's critical for us to honor those in a very unique way. And then finally, this is the last piece, if, and the, so ultimately, what we want all children to know and be able to do and how we know if they've learned it, how we will know if they learned it may look slightly different for us right now. And so we are working and our goal tomorrow in our professional development day is to take a look at our learning targets, pull out the quality hype, the power ones, if you will, and then focus on how we assess those. So tomorrow morning, we have all of our staff together in a webinar and then we'll break out, they will break out by teams to focus on that. But if I could bother you for a couple more minutes with this, we have a kind of a kickoff video that we were going to show the staff. So if I could show that, it will give you a glimpse of the work that has been done over the last couple of, I mean, since we started March, in March. So it's been, this is week four for us. And I think you could see some evidence of student work because these are examples of what we'd like to continue to grow. And I think you'll get an idea of what school looks like for us today. So I'm, I, there is music in the background, not really words, just kind of pictures with music.
All right.
Can you see that this?
You, you might need to make it.
Can you see? I'm sorry.
Just say, if you can make it full screen so people can see better.
X minus four.
I'll rise up, rise like the day, I'll rise up in spite of the egg. I will rise a thousand times again. And we'll rise up, I like the waves, we'll rise up in spite of the egg. We'll rise up and we'll do it a thousand times again.
So, thank you for letting me show, show this, show our new world. And I have to just share that I'm honored to be part of such an amazing team that has done amazing work in recent, all year, but in, in, to see the amazing work happen during the most challenging days, some of the most challenging days probably of our lives has been my honor. And I just thought that you all should see that as we're talking about the change and the, and not knowing the future. We understand that. We honor that. I am so happy that we're able to work so well with Rob and Zach, Mary Ann and I are, are, feel that that helps us every day. And so please know, we understand that these are trying times for folks, but we will continue to work very hard to, to support the community and we're, we're trying to be the glue for it and at least find some glimmers of hope in the midst of all of this. So thank you. That's all.
Thank you, Linda. I agree. I think you have a lot to be proud of there between the administration and teachers who are putting in all the work. And of course, a lot of recognition has to go to all the parents out there who are working so hard to make ends meet and help their children learn. I know I have two third graders and a kindergartner at home and can't believe all the work that goes into it. So at this point, are there questions among school committee or town council members or Rob or Linda? I see, Michelle, you already have your end up. I will unmute you all in order. So Michelle, you are first.
Linda, I'm just wondering if you could clarify for the community at large and for me also. Some of the CTE programs at the high school, what comes to mind is like carpentry and auto body. How are they functioning in this virtual world?
We're taking, so those, those courses are still grounded in standards. While there is, there are certainly hands-on pieces and it's project-based. We are, we've started initially with two weeks out planning and then added on the next couple of weeks. So it depends upon the program. There, as I think as we just saw, there are still projects that can be worked upon, just not necessarily in a collaborative environment. And then there are things like simulations that you can do. In the long term, a CTE, if we were to, is not an ideal in a virtual world. But in the short term, we can, we can pull it off. But if we were to say, you know, all of next school year, we were in a virtual environment, there is some level of CTE we would have to rethink.
And a second question is, can you expand on how the school nurse teachers are working in our environment? I know that we talked the other night about social workers visiting classrooms and so forth. Can you just expand on that a little bit?
The school nurse teachers have been really laid us huge, have been a huge foundation from day one for me. I spent many, many hours as we entered into this crisis. So, but their positions have definitely needed to be rethought. For example, we have a, in the contingency plan, there's a very specific list of what the, how the school nurse teachers have been rethought for this. But for, I'll give some, an example, they are, they help with, for example, they're at the food distribution and they've actually physically delivered food. So some of our families who need supports, they're, they're actually going to their homes with food delivery, but then helping with kind of that med, medical conversation. So if a child normally would have meds in school, they would be able to have conversation with the family about what that day normally looks like and support them. It's, you know, kind of a home visit, if you will, at this time that you don't have access to those kinds of supports. So, so they've become very frontline, very active for us in the community. But, and, and there is a list, we, they, you know, we kind of reinvented, we worked with other districts, for example, Westerly and other districts to kind of reinvent those, that position, those positions.
Thank you.
Thanks, Michelle. Kate Massenanti, you are next.
So I think my question is a combination between for Mary Ann and Rob. So when, on Tuesday, when we had our school committee meeting, I had asked Mary Ann why we wouldn't take the funds from this year's transportation, like any excess funds that we would have to roll into next year's. So that would reduce what we would need going in. And I, and please correct me if I misremember. I'm pretty sure Mary Ann, her, your response was basically that it wasn't good practice, right? To take money, to take our surplus, put it in, in the, in that reserve and then pull out of it. And I may be not understanding that properly. And then my question comes in to Rob. I feel like, isn't that what you said that you're doing to cover the difference so that we would have a 0% increase on the taxpayers? So I guess I'm confused why the school wouldn't do that, but the town is suggesting it. And maybe I, I just truly don't understand what we're doing in that particular topic, if I could get clarification on that.
So Kate, what I, what I stayed and was trying to convey was that we have a much smaller surplus than the town does. And also we got to think of the year that follows it. So if we take more out of it, that's more we're going to need in the following year for us. Also, keep in mind that we tapped into our surplus back in 2000 and just as early as 630, 2017. Our undesignated surplus was 2.7 million, 2.7 million 66, so close to 2.8. And as of 630, 2019, it's just 2 million, just a touch above $2 million. So we have tapped into that surplus when we did need it. So with the 1 million, it's going to bring us closer to what we were a few years ago. And also keep in mind, we had a financial projection. We do have operating savings that we will see. However, keep in mind, we're still taking $450,000 of that as part of a revenue source for the school district this year.
So Kate, in theory, there's no reason why the schools couldn't take surplus from one year, deposit it into the undesignated fund balance for the schools and use that as a revenue source. As Mary Ann just noted, the plan as it has been presented, does in fact use undesignated fund balance of $450,000. So that is a perfectly appropriate use. What Mary Ann has just said, and what I heard her say on Tuesday night is, this is a very uncertain world and we can't really afford to take the risk of doing that going forward because we don't have a very big reserve. And if we get into trouble, we don't have anywhere we can go to. Now that's a problem on both the municipal side and the school side. And in some ways, I would suggest that it's actually a bigger problem on the school side because once the funds are committed under state law to the school program, we can't claw them back. On the other hand, if we have a major change that has to be made in a municipal department, that can be changed. So there's, there's all sorts of strategic, you know, difficulties around using fund balance prematurely when you don't know what's going to happen in the future. I'm comfortable with the idea that the municipal fund balance and the program that we've laid out on the municipal side is, is right. We've got it, we've got a program that we can manage and the fund balance is sufficient using the way that we've proposed in the amendments offered last night or suggested last night. But there's no, in theory, there's no reason why the surplus from this year couldn't be used to fund school program. Part of the reason I've suggested a conditional mechanism for the rolling out of additional support for the schools above and beyond last year's property tax transfer is that we don't want to be in a situation where the schools are sitting on a healthy reserve next year. It's quite possible that, that the compensatory time issue doesn't in fact get resolved this year. You could find yourselves going through the summer and not being able to bring kids back into the schools, therefore not being able to do compensatory time during the period that you're expecting you're going to be able to do that. These are all uncertainties. These are all questions. We want to be able to know that the schools have sufficient reserve, putting that million dollars into the, the undesignated fund balance at the school does that. Again, 2 million to 3 million seems like a huge number, but you've got a $62 million program. It's, it's not, it's not a huge swing one way or the other. If we condition the additional funds that, that you've requested being absolutely necessary, demonstrating need as we go, then we're not supplementing a healthy fund balance unnecessarily. That's the reason for the conditional transfer of the property tax, the conditionality of the property tax transfer, as I've suggested. So that we're not, you've got a fund balance, you can use that fund balance on the, on the school side. We shouldn't be adding to that unless it's necessary. The conditions that we've laid out tied to transportation, not school educational purpose, but a real business function. If those needs arise, we recognize that they've got to be paid for. So we, we've recommended a conditional transfer of the funds to meet that business need as opposed to trying to mess around with your education program in any way.
Rob and Mary Ann. All right. That brings us to Stephanie Cantor.
Okay, so this is Stephanie Cantor speaking. So I wanted to first say something about what Kate had just asked. And something else to consider is, you know, just in general, what Rob said that, and Mary Ann as well, that it's not, if what we are standing behind as far as the budget is like, these are essential services to help all students thrive. This is what they need. Then it's a shaky situation to, to use undesignated funds for that. It's a, it's a pretty It's a, it's a pretty big risk to take, um, because then a year from now, we're, we're having to, um, still defend that amount, not being able to continuously tap into those undesignated funds. But something else to consider is that from a, like a quality of personnel standpoint, like a recruitment hiring standpoint, um, you're, a lot of the positions that Linda mentioned earlier, we want to emphasize that we might not be able to emphasize. So if I were to just take an example, would be like the co-teaching model at the elementary school, which we have seen great success with this year, um, as it was piloted at one of the schools in first grade, I think. In order to do that, you do have to add staff, but it is the right thing to do for the kids. Um, if you are then recruiting for a teaching position that supports a co-teaching model, but you're doing so with what is publicly known as undesignated funds that aren't truly like budgeted for, you're not necessarily going to get the quality of candidates that you want. It's, um, sort of like a grant funded position. There's a lot of risk in, you know, you might, you're, you, you just get a different candidate pool. So that's something to consider because we have always in South Kingstown wanting to recruit and retain the best teachers. Um, the next comment was really a clarification from last night because I had some questions about some federal funds that are available in Rhode Island. What I had referred to was the governor, governor's emergency education relief fund, the GEAR fund, um, which is a component of the CARES Act and Rhode Island is, um, marked for about a little more than 8.7 million. And the discussion that um, followed that, I think, was actually regarding the LEA stimulus funding for which Rhode Island is getting like 46.3 million. And that is being allocated in a similar fashion as Title I. So like the SK estimate based on us having 482,000 approximately in Title I A funding, the SK estimate for that, um, would be around 367,000. That is what I think might kind of follow the Title I, um, funding restrictions. But the GEAR fund, um, I just was curious what the, what the process is for applying for that and how districts can qualify for that. Um, and because it is, you know, between the 46 million and the 8.7 million, that's a significant amount of money. And so I just think it's a good idea to, um, be as proactively transparent with the public as possible as to what we're doing to make sure that we're taking advantage of the available funds and talking about where that money is going, if it can be used for paying for compensatory services and additional, you know, technology investments to make sure that all kids are connected. Um, and additional supports to make sure that, you know, children that need additional SEL supports and things like that. Um, so I just want to put that out there because I think it would be helpful for the community to understand how we're tapping into those, um, the federal funding that is designed um, to help support schools during crisis. And that's all. It wasn't really a question. I just wanted to clarify and just request that as soon as that information is available, um, that we, you know, we aggressively pursue it and share it with the public as soon as possible.
Uh, thank you, Stephanie. This is Abel. Uh, I, interesting stuff. I didn't know if you had anything to add on those topics, Linda, or if you're happy to.
Um, we, we don't, there isn't informa- there isn't information on that. In fact, I had a superintendent's meeting this morning and it came up, um, that everybody is anxiously waiting the details. Normally that, all those kinds of, those funds pass through Department of Ed. Department of Ed makes the kind of guidance, even though even federal funds pass through the Department of Ed. So we've not, we, we're waiting for, we have a couple of outstanding things from the Department of Ed, and that's one of them.
Great, thank you. Uh, all right, uh, Michelle Russo, I'm, I'm muting you.
Um, I am just, uh, tagging on to Kate's comments and questions. So Mary Ann, this is directed at you. Um, when, when I chaired the Accountability Subcommittee, one of the things that we discussed on a fairly regular basis was, and please excuse me if I'm using the incorrect, um, terminology, but, uh, the incorrect accounting terminology. But you had explained to me at that point that, um, best practices in accounting for school departments gave advice on a percent of the total budget that should be in an undesignated fund. Can you address that or can you get that information to us?
Well, this is Marion Crawford. Um, there's a couple of different percentages that have been thrown out there. Um, some talk about the eight to 10, some speak about the five to seven. Um, and what I've said at the Accountability Committee, and, and I'll say it again here, where we are with, um, our fund balance with the school district, it has dropped, like I just said, by $600,000 um, in the last year, which was a, a fairly significant drop. So the increase that we'll see is the 1 million. I feel comfortable with where the fund balance is. And keep in mind, the last time we used the fund balance was specifically for, um, the significant increase we had in students attending near again for the CTE program that, uh, was not budgeted. And that's a perfect example where it was a one-time, um, situation. Granted, the students continue there, but the following year, we did budget the fund so that we continued to pay the student, to pay for that, for those students to attend those programs. It was unanticipated, we didn't expect it, we didn't expect that increase. So even though our fund balance is not in the range that, um, some of the uh, folks talk about it should be, I, I'm fairly comfortable with where we are and where we're going with it.
Mr. President.
Thank you.
If I may also just comment, that also is a factor for us when we're looking at, um, what we're doing with the, the allocation of funds across all of the programs. We're not looking at a school department with a fund balance that is high by any measure. And in fact, on the, on the scale of, um, accounting preferences, it's on, it's below the low end right now. I understand that Mary Ann feels comfortable because of the programmatic, um, structure she's got in place, but it's below the low end right now. And we are moving it toward the low end of the, the preferences that are expressed. Not here locally, but the preferences in the professional community of school business officials. The, the fund that they're looking for, for this district would be north of $3 million.
Yeah, thank you. That's helpful. Um, this is Abel. Uh, our next speaker is Sarah Mark.
Hi, um, first I just wanted to start off with, um, some gratitude for, uh, you, Linda. I think you've done an amazing job. Um, I say that as a parent as much as I do as a school committee member in, um, really navigating a challenging and wild time where we moved to virtual learning in a very short period. And so I wanted to thank you for that. I also wanted to thank, um, the town manager because, um, I've spent a lot of time thinking about the presentation last night. Um, as a school committee member, but just generally as someone who's invested in our town. And I really appreciated, um, the, the articulation of the, the needs, the different priorities out there and that the recommendations that were presented to the town council both include protecting the services that make South Kingstown amazing and providing some relief, um, for taxpayers that, that may need it because of the economics due to this pandemic, um, including the zero tax increase. So I'm, I'm very, um, appreciative of that because I do think there's just a lot of anxiety right now, individual anxiety. I ask myself all the time, questions about whether my husband will be laid off, how my kids are adjusting, if my small business bookstore is going to close. But there's also systemic anxiety within, um, the systems that we have. I talked today to someone who filed for unemployment March 14th. They still haven't received it, they still haven't heard. And so in these, in this moment, right now, where we're in a crisis, I think the institutions that we have, um, at the state level, but also in our town, really, really matter. From senior services to public schools to parks and rec, like we have, like more is needed of us than, than ever. Um, and so we just want to, I, I really feel this, this urge to protect those, those services and those institutions. I say all this because one of the things I've been thinking about is four months ago, I don't, I wouldn't have guessed that we would swiftly transition to virtual learning and everything that we know about what school looks like during the day for our kids, that it would be so wildly different. And so I just wondered, um, you know, as we think out three, four months, um, again, I really appreciate the recommendations from the town manager because it's acknowledging that there are so many unknowns that we can't account for. But, um, I just wondered, are there, um, are there things in the school, um, budget that have popped up, been, uh, additional costs since we transitioned to virtual learning that we weren't anticipating before because we, we couldn't possibly have?
This is Marion Crawford. Um, I can rattle up a, a handful of stuff. There is still some costs that we, um, that may come up that we haven't seen so far. So there was an, um, some hardware and software costs we had to, um, that we hadn't anticipated. We also, um, cleaning supply is a big one. And also, uh, PP equipment and supplies for our custodial staff. Um, they have masks and now we have masks and gloves in all the buildings. And, um, we've sprayed all the buildings with this, um, electro solace, uh, device we have. And we also have done it to the town buildings and we're in the process of purchasing a second one of that. Uh, there has been some overtime for staff, um, especially the technology department, the, the, um, technology folks. And, um, we've had some, some smaller costs as relates to mailings and some miscellaneous supplies. We just mailed out a whole mess of information, passwords and things like that to all the students. We did that right before we, um, um, went off on virtual line. And then, um, so that the total cost we've had so far runs is close to $50,000 today. Um, there will be some additional costs that, um, I do anticipate. Um, at this point, I'm not sure what they will be. Uh, we do have enough hardware, um, and swapping out of hardware for other students. So we are in a good place with that. And we brought some cases, we need some more cases for the, the laptops that we did, uh, send out to protect them. So that's where we are at this point. Um, I do anticipate we may have some additional costs and we'll see what happens as time continues on.
Great, thank you, Sarah and Mary Ann. Uh, this is Abel. Uh, next, uh, up is Joe Vili.
Uh, hi, Joe Vili. Um, actually, Mary Ann, first, if you can, um, elaborate on your last answer. Would you say that, uh, of that 50,000 so far, the, the lion's share is in the IT probably? The hardware, software?
It's, um, a combination of that and also the cleaning supplies and the personal, um, equipment and stuff like that for the custodial staff.
But, but probably more in the IT than the cleaning, or you think it's about equal?
It's pretty much equal. And then there's, those two are running almost neck and neck. And then we have some small costs for, um, uh, like I said, mail-ins and miscellaneous supplies and things like that.
Yeah, okay. Um, so Mary Ann, I have a question about the, um, the savings in the transportation. Since it seems that there's not a lot of extra cost, is that all getting, uh, uh, allocated to undesignated fund except for these new expenses?
As of right now, the anticipated savings that I presented to the school committee on Tuesday night was 1,156,000. We still have a couple of bills outstanding, so there are some estimates in there. So, uh, Joe, those numbers may change slightly, um, once we get those final bills. Um, we're still waiting on bills from, uh, statewide transportation.
Uh, and then another question, I think I understood last night when we talked about the, um, the meals program that you're running, I guess that is sort of, uh, the, a parent will come and pick up meals for the, for the student for the day. Is there an increase in cost to the meal program because of the way that we're doing it now? Or is it about the same, or is it less, or?
So because this is in, Marion Crawford again, um, unusual times, um, to, for us to be able to do the meal programs, we had to go through a number of application processes through right, through USDA. Then eventually USDA relaxed a bunch of, of regulations so that all school districts about throughout the country, no matter what the, uh, free reduced numbers are, could provide lunches. At this point, what we're hoping is that we can break even with those lunches and breakfasts. We've seen it increase because although we're not charging, the federal government USDA is going to reimburse us for those lunches. But it's a base of, as we get more lunches and we provide more, the reimbursement will be more, which would then cover some of the costs specifically as relates to labor. At this point, it's too early for me to predict or speculate how we may, uh, end up with, with the school lunches. I think initially there may be some costs associated with that. Um, once we get through April, we'll have a better idea. Um, we started, once we started the lunch program, um, I haven't seen the numbers for this week. At the end of last week, we were up to about 125 lunches a day.
Okay.
And I expect that to increase.
But your anticipation with the reimbursement is it, it may come out to be a wash or a small increase, or?
We're hoping to break even, that's our goal. Um, but there may be some costs in the initial months. And like I said, at this point, until we start looking at the definitive numbers, we're working closely with the, with Chartwell's to be sure that, um, we can contain those costs.
Okay, thank you. Um, so, uh, I, I, I thank you for clarifying that. It's, so I think I have a, a fairly clear picture now. So, um, I know we've discussed that last year, we went through all the budget negotiations and, um, the town council, uh, did a property tax transfer. After that was done, there were funds that were found somewhere in the neighborhood of 508 or 511,000 dollars. Um, so in effect, the school department got the property tax transfer that asked for and had the benefit of these other funds, um, that were found through different savings, I understand. So this year, we have a little different situation. So we have about a million one or a million two that we're finding before we're finished. And the school department has decided to, uh, transfer that money to reserves and still ask for a 2% property tax, uh, transfer. Um, I, I, I feel that you, you're, you're part of the description that I heard in one of your answers earlier was that, you know, the undesignated fund balance is, um, lower than it should be. But that was the case before we went to this remote learning and had this tremendous savings in transportation. That was the case, and that was the case when the school department asked for the 2%. So there's this windfall. And so instead of putting it toward reducing the ask, um, we're deciding, or the school department's deciding, put it in undesignated fund balance. Um, we talked about this quite a lot last night. The, the economic conditions are like none that we have ever seen in my lifetime. I, I am not a pup. We, we know that there are going to be some business closings. We know already that a lot of, uh, employees are losing their jobs, retail and restaurants, even the ones that are operating, uh, on, uh, they're, they have gradually, dramatically includes, uh, reduced, uh, revenues. Uh, and they're the taxpayers. So, so again, I'll just sort of recap a little bit that there's a million that, that we find before we're finished with the budget negotiations. And instead of putting that forward to help the taxpayers, we're going to put it into undesignated fund balance. The, we're, we're talking about the 1.1 or 1.2 million dollars in new money. We're talking about the 2% property tax transfer. And we can't forget that we have enrollment that's declining, some would say dramatically. We know that we have a reduced, uh, state aid. But part of the reason we have a do, reduced state aid, twofold in my opinion. One is you have reduced enrollment and so per pupil calculation. And the second is we haven't solved the inefficiencies in our, um, in our facilities. Uh, I know that there's a plan that's working on that, but, um, we haven't solved it, we haven't even, um, I, I don't, my opinion, we haven't. I don't, my opinion, we haven't begun to solve it. And I think we should stop trying to solve it because this is another source of cost. We know that somewhere between 600,000 and a million dollars is probably being spent on this already. I would assume because your budget is pretty tight, that that's coming out of undesigned fund balance. Just a hunch on my part, you can clarify that for me. And the other point that I make every year at budget time is wherever we end this year, that's where we start next year. If we end this year at $64 million, that's where the school department will start next year. This year is is different, though, and I think a lot riskier. Because we usually will pay it out of taxes, we'll pay the transfer out of taxes. This year, we're going to take money out of our town's undesigned fund balance. So now we're starting at $64 million and we didn't get it all from taxes. We got the 2% out of undesigned fund balance. And so now next year, the taxpayer really is only on the hook this year for 62 million, and I'm using round figures. So next year, if we start at 64, we have to find two first. It's to me, next year is the real risk here because we've we've funded this 2% property tax transfer primarily with reserve funds. Unless you're going to do the same thing next year, you have to increase taxes to start at the same place. And we always start at the same place. I don't I've been at this for six years on this side of the table. I've been at these budget hearings. I was a young guy when that when that started. So those are my comments. I mean, if you want to clarify anything that I said that might have been a little off or I'm glad to have the discussion.
Thank you, Joe. I don't know who wants to take a try that. One thing I would just say, Joe, this is Abel, obviously, is that the windfall that the schools might see in terms of transportation savings, I think that is I mean, it seems like it could be there, but then the whole contingency is predicated on those transportation savings. So if, you know, they end up not needing to bus, that's when the 1% doesn't get transferred. Right? Am I understanding that correctly?
No, I think I think the way I understand it is from March, whatever date it was that we started not needing buses till May, whatever date this ends, we're looking, and maybe it's till the end of the year. I don't know where the school department came up with their figures. But they estimate there'll be a 1.1, 1.2 million dollar savings. That's not going into next year. That's the savings. And it makes sense, right? If it's three months and we have a school year that's 10 months and we know it's $4 million for transportation, two and a half months is probably about a million two. I mean, it sort of makes sense. So I so this is money that we know we're saving. It's not predicated on whether or not they need buses in September. That's that's a new equation.
That's right. But I would also, this is Rob Zernetsky, I'm sorry, I'd also point out that the idea of making the additional property tax transfer, the increase in the property tax transfer conditioned on something is the concept that that we've been working with. We're introducing a tool to the council. I don't want the council to have the impression or the public to have the impression that the only condition is that one condition. If there's another logical condition out there, we should certainly be talking about and thinking through whether or not that makes sense. The point is finding a mechanism that doesn't throw, and I don't want to be pejorative about it, doesn't put too much funding into an undesigned fund balance in one part of the budget or one part of the municipal finance environment at the expense of the taxpayer. So we're trying to make sure that there's a condition in place that lets the money flow to the schools if the need arises and only if the need arises. Now, the million dollars that's going to be saved from buses this year may in fact stick in the undesigned fund balance at the school department. But it may also end up being expended for things such as compensatory time over over the summer, if that's a possible expenditure and it's a possible expenditure. Or other expenses that we don't foresee because school is just on its head next year. That the idea that there's going to be money to work with to preserve an education program that's effective next year is an important concept for us to be working with. The other important concept for us to be working with is that we can't support that, the uncertainties and deal with the uncertainties on the education program to the absolute detriment of all of the other programs, which is why the idea of having them tied to conditions that we're evaluating, measuring and talking about throughout the year is an important tool. And I want I want folks to be thinking about the tool, not just the particular condition that we've identified.
So Rob, Joe Vili again, if I can, let's have the conversation. So the fact that they may need money in the future, to me, is in a good case for saying, just hold this million two or million one, whatever it is. And as far, I want to use a scenario, 2% property tax transfer is what's the dollar amount, Rob?
Million bucks.
Million bucks.
A million, a million.
So so if if we say, if we put these conditions on and we say, okay, a half a million dollars September 1, half a million dollars October 1, just as an example, and that's only if you need buses. And then they don't need buses for a year and they don't spend $4 million. Now, as you said, they may have other expenses, but that's an unknown and I don't so we don't fund the second half a million. And if they don't need buses till January, they they save 2 million. And I don't, I I'm trying to be careful not to frame this in us and them. We're, it's all us.
That's right.
But the 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 case is that if we hold back a million for 30 or 60 days and they save 2 million, we've seen in this one example with the savings they've got, instead of putting it toward programs in the future, they're they're deciding to keep it.
That's you're right. I mean, the point, your point is, this is Rob Zernetsky again, your point is very well taken. The there's a couple of things that we need to sort of level set. First, last night when we were talking about this, we were talking about a lump sum upfront and then adding to that as we go. In trying to operationalize that, that just doesn't work as well as just loading the money as you get to the year. You only get the money for the full year if you're going to bus for the full year. That's the new configuration that I showed this evening. The formulation is a little bit different. It's not additive. It's it's a subtraction from the total that the council deems appropriate to send as an additional property tax transfer. There's a couple of issues that we simply can't deal with. If there are no school buses next year, you're right, the savings is going to be 4 million plus on that budget. We are committed under state law, though, to maintain our level of of maintenance, to continue funding at the level we funded last year. We cannot cut the funding. So we can't recapture, we can't capture the savings on the bus contract if there is no bus service next year. We cannot get $4 million back.
And I understand that. I understand that completely. You have to, there's a maintenance of effort. I get that. But if there's a, if 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 they saved a million dollars so far, why are we giving? Why are we funding the the 2% and then going forward? I I'm okay, maintenance of effort. I'm okay doing that. But
I'm sorry, this is Rob Zernetsky again. On some level, which pocket it's in isn't all that important, whether it's in the school department's undesigned fund balance or the town's undesigned fund balance, whether it's rainy day checks that are pink or rainy day checks that are blue, doesn't make much of a difference. We just need to have the accounts that we can draw on if conditions require us to do so. So what I'm trying to to suggest is we need to figure out how to tie the use of those funds in their undesigned fund balance to the use or non-use of our undesigned fund. You're exactly right that what we're proposing here is to avoid a tax increase by tapping undesigned fund. But if we never need to spend any of the money, the $2 million, I'm sorry, the million dollars on buses, because we never go back to to physical school next year, then we shouldn't be sending money for buses, that portion which we could hold back to the the school undesigned fund. We hold that in our reserve, which means that we don't have to. We don't have to draw down the reserve as revenue for the tax benefit. We're just trying to make sure that the money is there for all of the contingencies and all of the programs, not to overburden any of those accounts, not to be in a situation where we have to do some sort of mid-year supplemental budget, but work with fluid, reasonable fluid amounts. I mean, we're not talking about crazy numbers. The the fund balance that the school department carries is not a crazy number. It's not some obscene large number of funds compared to other school districts. It's it's in the reasonableness range. It's not a crazy number. The same is true on our side. What I'm worried about more than anything else is getting into a situation where we don't have enough undesigned fund. We don't have enough rainy rainy day funds left for municipal program. We're not in great jeopardy of that right now. So where the money is, whether it's it's sitting in a million dollars it saved this year is sitting in the school department's undesigned fund or sitting in our fund. It's not going to make much difference if we're having an ongoing conversation about making sure that all of those monies are allocated and used effectively when the needs arise. So what I'm trying to do is get us wed tied at the hip so that throughout the year, we are aware of the needs in the school department. The school department is aware of our situation and we're not us and theming it. We're not competing, but we're working together to make sure that the allocations work across all of those accounts. That's what we're trying to do here.
Okay, all right. I don't agree completely. I think it does matter in in some sense what pocket it's in. And I would be much more in favor of not taking any money out of our undesigned fund balance this year, not doing the 2% property tax transfer and let them use, let them use what they saved on buses. But that's not ideal to me either. But I think, I mean, that that's I could agree with that more.
And I, this is Rob Zernetsky. I really do understand and appreciate that perspective. I don't think that that's a crazy way of viewing the world. We're just trying to figure out how to work through and keeping the team working together is something I put high value on. I think that, you know, when you've got good working relationships, you build on them. Right now, we've got the best working relationship I've had with a school superintendent and business department. Maybe ever. I mean, it's it's a pretty good, I feel fairly give and take kind of relationship. And I don't think we're going to get burned on this one. I don't, I don't feel let it sit in that pocket. We're not going to have it if we need it.
That's not the impression I want to leave anybody with. And I am thankful that you have a good relationship. But history, and I understand that there are different players at the table, but history has told us that we need to be careful. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Next, we have Rory Mc.
Rory McEntee, Mary Ann, I got a few questions for you. In addition to the savings that are being experienced for the from the lack of transportation as a result of moving learning to online, are there other areas experiencing savings? And if so, can you identify those and the amounts? And whether you anticipate additional savings if another semester or quarter is continued online through the fall?
Some of the additional savings we may see this year and I and we're just starting to look at we're starting to get the last of the bills for the month of March and that we're paying for like things like substitutes and stuff like that. So we may see some additional savings. I mean, we may see additional costs that we didn't anticipate. So at this point, am I prepared to start talking about additional savings? I won't have that number until we get some final bills in. We have shut off the boilers at the school. You know, we may see some electrical savings and we didn't, we've had a good winter. So we were on a road where the heating costs were probably not as significant. However, we're doing other things with those savings. We are now doing repair works to the school. We've done a ton of painting and things along that line. As far as going into next year, I don't have that number with me this evening. I would have to work that through if we were a quarter or a semester out next year. And how that would look.
Okay, so my interpretation of that is the new expenses incurred as a result of going online kind of net out with the savings experienced as a result of going online, which leads to really the only savings net is from the transportation. Is that correct?
Okay, I'm sorry. The transportation is the significant piece of the savings. And you're right, it's going to a few dollars here, a few dollars there. One may be a little high, one might be a little low, but it's pretty much going to net out.
Thank you.
Okay. Next on our list is Emily Comiskey.
Hi, um, I just wanted to reiterate my real gratitude for the town manager and also for Zach and would like to add on to that the appreciation that I have for how well our superintendent and Mary Ann have worked with Zach and Rob on this. The seriousness of this crisis is something that we have never faced before. And to for the town manager to have come with is an idea to make it so that there's not a tax increase for anyone in South Kingston next year, I just couldn't be more appreciative about that. To be able to do do that for our taxpayers at the same time as making sure that the school district can provide supports for our students. I think that it's really amazing and that we're really fortunate that our team has on both sides been able to work together to to bring that to the table. As people have talked about already, business owners are suffering. Everybody is really facing a loss here. We have a loss of what we expected. Our spring was going to look like. Our kids have faced faced losses from not being able to play on sports teams that mean a lot to them or performing in concerts. The last thing that I would want is for our kids to shoulder the burden of of this financial crisis. And I think that it's more important than ever that we make sure that we have the supports in place to make sure that they they have everything that they need to be successful. If there wasn't ever a time to make sure that that we had these our ducks in a row for these kids, I think it's going to be for this September in the months moving forward. So for Linda and Rob to have been able to work together to figure out a way to not only support our taxpayers by not increasing taxes next year, but still be able to afford our students what they deserve. I just, I couldn't be more thankful for that collaboration. It seems to be that there's a little bit of confusion. I'm not sure if I over the food. And I'm not sure if it stemmed by what I said last night, but why I brought up chart walls last night was that there had been some misconception that I had been contacted specifically about surrounding all the savings that were being reaped by the school department because of going online. And I think that several people have already touched on that, but I did want to apologize if I caused any confusion there. But even though the state is reimbursing for meals, the district is still responsible for the district is still responsible for contractual obligations with Chartwells. That didn't stop. And that was all I was trying to to bring up last night is that really the only savings that the district is seeing, as has been discussed, is that of the busing. So I'm sorry if I caused any confusion by bringing the food services up last night. That wasn't my intention. I think that is all. I think everything else has really been said. And thank you, everyone, for all of your thoughtful comments tonight. And I think that it's really been a good discussion both last night and tonight. And I appreciate everybody's comments and everybody's efforts that's here at the table tonight. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Emily. Next, Deb.
Okay, so I have just a question. I'm sorry, Debbie Kelso here. A clarification on the property tax transfer. So last year, we had a property tax transfer to the schools of about 56 million. And this year, it's touching about 50, 55 million last year and this year 56 million. Next year, we start at 56 million, correct? Not the entire school budget. There was some mention that 64 million going next year would be the would be the starting point. But that's not the starting point. The starting point next year is 56 million. Am I correct in that? Or am I, it's not the whole school budget? If somebody can help me.
Deb, Joe Vili here. I'm just going to clarify, I was referring to the entire budget. And typically, what the school committee and department does is they'll come to us with an entire budget that includes the property tax transfer. So this year, it's somewhere around 62 change. And with the 2% transfer and other contributions to it, it'll be about 64 change.
That's correct. That's correct. I'm just, I'm just looking for clarification on the taxpayer's liability or the taxpayers, you know, where we start from next year. Is the property tax transfer, not the entire school budget? Is that correct?
My my impression is, and then I'll let somebody else answer, is they present an entire budget to us with initially with 1, 2, 3, 4% transfer for for us to all talk about. But I my recollection is we get presented an entire transfer and then the negotiations start for the PTT. That's and somebody please clarify.
This this is Abel. I would say that I I think one of the ideas that Linda has brought to the table and, you know, the budget subcommittee has been working on is rather than sort of just seeing the school budget as what it was last year and what the increase is going to be over that is trying to build a zero-based budget around programming and what, you know, the educational program demands in terms of funding.
I I fully understand that. I guess my question really is technical. What figure represents the maintenance of effort?
Yeah, that would be the property tax transfer that you're talking about.
Well, it it's a little bit more complicated than that. The level of effort under state law is a per pupil calculation. So the level of effort last year was based on the student population last year. In a declining student population, your level of effort is slightly lower as your population declines. But last year's property tax transfer was 54,893,000. That is the baseline essentially. There is a slight reduction in student population. You divide that number by the total school population, student population, and that's the level of effort from year to year.
Okay, so I guess I'm really where I'm heading is what happens when the other sources of revenue of funding decline in the next fiscal year? What happens to the the town's maintenance of effort for the schools?
So what has happened over the last several years at least, and really over the course of the last decade, as state revenues did decline, the town has stepped up. A greater portion of the school budget is funded by local property taxpayers than was the case a decade ago. So we've actually been above level of effort, at least in the last two years. And my recollection from the time before I was here is not as as good. Mary Ann may be able to shed some light on that. But we've been above, certainly above, what a straight maintenance of of effort would be by by far, especially given that there is a declining population. We've never been in jeopardy of being sued because we have not maintained our level of effort. It's just we've been nowhere near that number.
All right, thank you.
Unmute you, Mary Ann. For some reason, it's not working when I'm trying to unmute Mary Ann. Can somebody else do that?
I just unmute myself.
So I don't know if you wanted to add anything to that. I thought Rob might have.
Yeah, Rob, it's pretty accurate what Rob said, and and he's accurate. The last three to five years, the property tax transfer has been, you know, 2%, 2 and 1/4, 1.93. Prior to that, there were some years where there was 0%. But in in the last four to five years, especially with the significant drop we've seen in the state aid, most of the tax transfer has been used to offset the cost of the property of the drop in state aid. We've seen this year, we're looking at 659,000 in state aid. The actual budget's going up, I think the number's 439,000, something like that. So the bulk of it is used to offset the drop we've seen in the state aid. And this year is the last year. This is the 10th year. So that's, as I've said, when I opened the budget session with Linda earlier this year, I said, but I have good news. We're in the 10th year. So and I still say that we're in the 10th year.
Thank you, Mary Ann. All right, Sarah Mark.
Hi, I just had one short comment, which is we've spent a lot of time talking about the transportation savings. And that is so valuable and and worthy. And I understand why we would really explore that and its role both in this year's budget for the school district and the town and then next year's budget. I just think it's worth saying, I, it is not a windfall. This is not good fortune. A pandemic hit, people are struggling, losing jobs, their lives in some cases. And and we had to quickly adjust. And our leadership team, our students, our staff quickly moved virtual learning online successfully. And it's at that moment that it became clear that the school committee could take action and invoke language in our contract to save the funds that would have otherwise been paid to Chartwells. Now, there's lots of questions as has also been said about the the transportation savings and what the unknown cost might be this year, even with special ed, with other things. We can't even know what they are because the needs are changing so much. And this is an unprecedented time. But I don't think that this is a windfall, that this is somehow like money we made off with. It was a savings and it was a good decision by the school committee to invoke that contract language to not unnecessarily pay the bus company. Thanks.
So Abel, if I can, Sarah, Joe Vili. If I use the word windfall, it certainly wasn't. It wasn't in the in the way I think that you took it. But this is a budget hearing and we're talking about dollars and cents. Everybody, everybody understands the gravity of this pandemic and 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 what it's done to people, including taking the lives of some people. So if if that was offensive, I retract it, I'll apologize. But I mean, it it's, it's a lot of money. And this is, we're talking budget and we're talking dollars and cents. But I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Thanks, Sarah. And just to to speak on that, yeah, I can understand, you know, it is, I mean, it's a silver lining, right? To see some savings from transportation costs. But I think it would be problematic to try and view that as some way to finance operations because it's not a long-term savings that we can count on, right? It's it's a one-time, perhaps next year, a two-time thing that's going to happen. But eventually, kids are going to start going back into our schools and we're going to need to have that transportation cost as part of our budgeting process. So I think it makes sense. You know, this is what happens when we end up with a surplus every year. We don't suddenly try to operationalize savings like that. We put it into the rainy day fund for, you know, horrible circumstances. So I I mean, I know that it's it's still obviously worthy of a budget discussion, I think, in this regard. Joe, that's the way I'm thinking of it.
Abel, Joe Vili, just one quick comment on that. It 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 is a one-time savings. This budget going forward funds the full transportation for next year. So it's, I I never once implied that we weren't going to fund that for next year.
Right, right. I know. All right, I see Zach, you have your hand up and unmute you.
I just wanted to make a point of just quick clarification to earlier to something that Councilman Vili had mentioned about the undesignated fund balance of the town. The town has consistently used portions of the fund balance, you know, to fund, you know, for different reasons. Sometimes it's funding for operations, it's funding for an unforeseen budget item that may need to be purchased. It's, you know, to help for your reserves. So we have used it. It has ranged, you know, as far back and I'll have to double check myself. But I think back in the, you know, early 2010 range, the, you know, the fund balances were as high as the use of the fund balance were as high as 1.2 million and has gradually gone down over the last, you know, 10 years from as I think a high point of 1.2 to where we were this year before when we originally presented the budget of a half a million. We actually reduced it from last year's use of 550 to help, you know, stabilize, you know, the the budget or the operating budget. So this year, increasing it back up, we go back to, you know, a high watermark. But again, it is using, you know, to offset future, you know, property tax increases for this year. And then, you know, our goal or my job is to, if you want to reset that property tax transfer back to, you know, where it was last year, we will reconfigure the budget. I will do whatever, you know, you request and at the council's request. When we started this process, we started at the 55 million from last year and then kind of worked up from there and came to a number. If that doesn't work, we will definitely come to a number that is satisfactory to the council.
And Zach, Joe Vili, just for clarification. And historically, don't we usually, and I don't want to use the term budget surplus, but maybe that isn't totally improper, and then we'll sweep that into the undesignated fund? So it's sort of a two-way street, historically, I think has been.
That, correct. I mean, it's, there are sometimes conservative budget practices do allow for savings in certain areas. And then if we do achieve a savings, it does get swept into our fund balance, which is why for years, we have been able to build a healthy reserve. And it's extremely necessary on the town side to have that healthy reserve because it is used as an indicator for financial strength, especially with bond rating agencies. And it is a important long-term financial indicator of the town's operations and its stability to rating agencies, to the community, to other states. So you are correct. You know, if we do achieve budget surpluses in certain areas, we will use them to offset sometime deficit in other department areas. And you've seen we in the past, we have come and asked for transfers at the end of the year to help achieve that. We may use those surpluses in the capital accounts so that we don't have to draw down from fund balance if we do achieve those surpluses. You are, you are correct. Just like, you know, on the private sector, it would roll into your retained earnings.
Right, thank you, Zach. All right, we're good. So any other comments or questions from panelists? Okay, well, then I think we can move all the attendees into the to the meeting for the open up to public comment now. So for everybody who's coming in, who's on their phone line, what you're going to want to do to raise your hand is hit star nine. And then you are also going to want to hit star six to unmute yourself. If you're on the Zoom meeting online, there's that little, if you click on participants, you'll see your list with everybody's name on it. And there will be a little button that says raise your hand. And you can do that. And I'm, you know, first come, first served. You know, please state your name for the record and we'll make it as we go. Okay, so our first comment is from Bridget.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, this is Bridget Gonzalez. I am a special ed teacher at West Kingston. I just wanted to take this opportunity tonight to call in and express my gratitude for Linda Savistano and the leadership team. What has happened in South Kingstown in the last few weeks is truly remarkable. The leadership and guidance and communication we have received from from Linda and all of the the leadership team has enabled us to to really uniquely provide differentiated instruction for all kids in a whole new way, a way I never even imagined after my years of teaching. So I just wanted to express that that appreciation and the dedication from Linda just seems to be growing day after day through this crisis. And I think it just needs to be recognized of the hard work that's been put in by everyone involved to get us to this point.
Thank you, Bridget.
Thank you.
All right, is there other public comment? Let's see, I'm going to guess that this is Kevin Bell and not Sarah Bell, but I could be wrong. Let's see.
Yeah, that's me. Okay, hello, this is me, Sarah. No, it's Kevin Bell. Yeah, I just, I just wanted to, I really enjoyed, I believe it was Linda that she shared. I always make sure it was Linda that shared the 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 wonderful work, you know, as far as with with the childrens like that. I think I think South County is school. I think I think it's like a number one, you know. I definitely root and just it's it's just amazing to to see all that, you know, as far as the technology and have the students and so forth. Yeah, and 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 definitely this meeting here, I mean, especially with the the working together, you know, with the town and also with the school. You know, I basically I honor you, you know, all and to really to collaborate together into making making this this possible. I I'm basically just praying that, you know, basically beginning of the school year, we could get back and, you know, have our kids go back to school, teachers and definitely with the programs. And in fact, actually, I might teach chess for for the kids, you know, for after-school program and stuff like that. So I do that kind of on the side. But anyways, but yeah, yeah, I'm just, I'm just praying that things will 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 basically get picked up. And yeah, and I'm just, yeah, I just want to say thank you. That's about it. Yeah, so, okay.
Thank you, Kevin. All right, next up is Greg Sweet.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Greg, you could be heard.
Yes, Greg, we can hear you.
Now you muted.
How about now?
You're good.
All right. First of all, you guys are doing a great job with Zoom. Came a long way in the last couple of weeks. For me to be able to get on, that says something for you guys. Last year, well, I guess it's this, no, it's last, I think it's last year, was the school Was was the school budget, did they have a surplus of about 450,000?
Last year, we had a surplus of little over, this is Marion Crawford, I'm sorry, a little over $100,000, 166,000, I think, was the exact amount. And also, we used in last fiscal year, fiscal 2019, we did use some of the surplus to fund book ad tuition for the Narragansett, for students intended in Narragansett schools, and it was about 372,000.
The three, 372 is for what? I missed that.
We had for fiscal fiscal 2019, we had under budgeted the number of students we anticipate going to Narragansett, specifically Narragansett Book Tech School. It was about 10 kids, 10 to 15 kids higher than we had budgeted for. So we use the surplus to pay for that tuition.
So the end result on the surplus was about 150 roughly?
We had the expenditure of 372 plus the surplus of 166, so you're talking about a difference of $200,000. Keep in mind, we also used another 475,000 of the surplus this year as a source of revenue to the school district also. So the undesigned surplus dropped by about 600, almost 700.
I I missed the last part of that.
I think what Marion was saying, Marion can, I think she muted herself from too early. But she was saying the the undesigned fund balance that the schools carry is decreased by 700 or 600,000.
Just slightly under 700,000.
That was put into the slush fund, if you will?
This is Abel, that, I think that was subtracted from.
Okay, second, I'm having a hard time here, that's, that's why I am questioning it. So you've you've put about 150,000 in, plus you're putting in another 100 million point one in that slush fund?
As we see how the year ends, the information that I provide to the school committee in the town council is the total cost of savings of transportation, transportation, if you don't go to school for the rest of the year. As we stated, there may be some other unanticipated expenditures that we are not aware of, not only this fiscal year, but possibly next fiscal year too.
Okay, all of the extra costs that you guys are experiencing now due to the virus, I'm assuming you'll get reimbursed on that?
So this is Rob Zernetsky. Reimbursement on many of the expenses are unknown at this point, both for the schools and heck, even for our police department and paramedics. How federal and state aid is going to flow is very much up in the air.
Do you think the probability is at least half will get reimbursed? Or you really had no, no idea whatsoever?
I can answer that very quickly if you would like, and there's not a real direct answer. But I mean, the federal government has not even accepted applications from the states for this funding. I think it's in within the next, like, three weeks, they will request applications, and then the hope is 30 days after that. So these are all estimates on what will be allocated out of the CARES Act. But it's all unknowns on how this is going to be allocated. There are a lot of districts in Rhode Island and in other states that have significant need, like a significant portion of their student population is free and reduced lunch. This is just, it's just an unknown, not just for us, for everyone. I just wanted to put that out there, there are estimates out there, but these are not even reimbursements. I wouldn't even call them reimbursements. Right, like, it's not reimbursed, it's not a dollar for dollar reimbursement on your expenditures to put together a continuity of learning plan in a distance environment. That's just not what it is. So I, there is no answer for that right now. They, the federal government has not even requested applications from states at this time.
Okay, well, if if you get, whether it be a dollar or a million dollars, are you going to reduce what you're asking for property tax transfer? Or are you going to put that in your savings account? Or will that money go?
Again, like, we don't know what the restrictions are going to be on how that money is spent. It's possible that it would, some of the funds would have to be spent on like, things that support learning for, in the same way that like Title I funds do. So again, like, we, we just don't know, we, there are, they don't give you a check and tell you to use it how you want. A lot of times, like, it just, it does need to be in response to the crisis that the stimulus funding was put in place to alleviate.
Okay.
So again, it's just not something that we can commit to at this point. We don't know the dollar amount, we don't know the restrictions. That's why I asked earlier for us to get ahead of it and be aggressive in the way that we apply for the funds and that we are transparent on the process and where we stand in it. Then information doesn't exist right now. That's what I was talking about earlier.
Okay, but if if you guys do end up getting some form of money and you can, I don't know if I can say do what you want with it, but you guys have leeway on how to spend it. Is that, are you going to take that off your asking of the property tax transfer? Are you going to put it in a savings account or what will happen with that money?
I can't really commit to that, but a good, a good answer for that would be like, we don't know what the compensatory services are going to cost. That is a good example of what all districts are experiencing as an unknown added expense for their students that require special ed services or are differently abled and things that we just can't provide in a distance learning environment, those are unknowns. Those are the types of things that like stimulus funding is kind of designed to help alleviate because they were unknowns and it's things that you just don't budget for. Additionally, you know, if you have to acquire a whole new fleet of Chromebooks because you only plan on having grades five through 12, one to one with Chromebooks, but now you need to send K through four home with those devices so that they can stay connected. Again, like, these are things that you don't encounter, they're not things that you're really going to encounter year over year, and that's why stimulus funding is necessary. I mean, I don't know if Marianne or Linda wants to jump in, but it's I don't, I don't think that it's wise to use the term slush fund or savings account. I don't think that those things apply in these scenarios.
Always, Sarah, but you're right, it's, I'm not sure what your technical term is for it.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Greg, there's, there's one other sort of very pragmatic problem we have here. And that is the budget schedule, even if we were to extend it, is not likely to go long enough so that we're going to know how much money is coming into the schools. If we're looking at budget adoption under the charter provision, we've got 11 days. We're, we're just not going to know how much money is coming to the schools. And again, that's why for me, the thing is to make sure that we are tying whatever is going in as the additional property tax transfer to conditions so that we're not sending local money in after federal money has gone in or after, you know, we've, we've determined that there's no need for school buses. We need to figure out how to tie the contributions in to what's already there and what what's needed, whether, if if what's the school budget is sufficient for the school's needs because there's no school buses, for example, or because there's federal money coming in to cover the expenses, then we shouldn't be sending more local money in over the course of this very tumultuous, uncertain year. But if it's needed, we need to be able to make it available to the schools.
Can you make it a condition, you go, it sounds like you're going to be making a condition to get half an hour and half later, in simplistic terms?
I actually think we're going to have to move away from that half and half concept. We're going to have to move into a much more refined incrementalism. It's going to have to be monthly, I think, as opposed to, as opposed to half in and half out. We try, we try to figure out how to make a 1% and a 1% work. It's easier to do a 10%, 10%, 10% based on the fact that there's a 10 month school year and you can build up from there.
Could it be tied into that then? Like, if you get X amount of dollars back and you and you can use it for reimbursement, I'm going to say that it's kind of giving you your money back for what you have to outlay for the virus.
So the answer to your question is, in theory, any condition with regard to new money above the maintenance of level, any condition is appropriate, so long as you're not interfering with the education choices that the the school committee and the department are making.
Is that something you would entertain?
I don't understand that question, what do you mean?
Depending on what you get from the government from as aides, if they give you the leeway to use it as reimbursement, can you use that money and incorporate it into the 10%, 10%, 10%? Does that make sense?
There's probably a way to design what you're getting at, Greg. I I can't tell you how I'd design that because the conditions have to be identifiable and actionable. Whatever your condition is, you got to know that you've hit it. It has to be a clear trigger. So it couldn't be if you get more money from the federal government for X, Y, or Z, then we're not going to give you more money for that same thing. You have to, you have to figure out how to make it a clear thing, which is why transportation is such an easy one because we know whether buses are rolling in a given month. But, you know, again, to my earlier point, it's the mechanism that ties our planning throughout the year together that's more important than the condition itself. Whatever good condition the policymakers want, we'll figure out. We just need to, we need to know what conditions make sense and we can go from there. Transportation is a relatively easy one and it's a logical one because it's very clearly the one that we we've seen play out already. We know that they're not using that account right now. The transportation account is not being used now and it might not be used for the rest of the year. And it might not be used going into next year.
Jeez, I hope not.
We.
We don't know. Do you think it's possible to damn phone, do you think it's possible to go to the 1%? I I just hate to see the money taken out of the reserve. I know there's, you know, theoretically plenty in there, but this school is getting roughly a million dollars from transportation that's not being spent and I get, you know.
So this is, this is Rob Zernetsky again. Greg, I I hear that point, I really do, but it it, I'm going to reiterate something, maybe I'll say it better than I said it the first time. It's coming out of reserve, it's coming out of the undesigned fund balance, even if it's coming out of the school department's undesigned fund balance. It doesn't, it doesn't, the town's finances in total include the school and include the municipality. The only possible adverse impact from having it come from the town's undesigned fund balance, the municipal fund, general fund, undesigned fund balance, as opposed to the school departments, is if doing that would endanger, would compromise our bond rating, our our fiscal state. And it doesn't, we're healthy enough on our side that it's not going to have a negative impact. In fact, Zach and I met with Moody's just last week. We told them what our strategy was, they issued a bond rating and said, you guys are, you're fine. Your rating is not going to suffer at all because of the strategy you're you're pursuing there. So the money will be available for school contingencies in the school fund. If we can tie transfers from the general fund to the school fund to conditions that make sense, then the money's not going to flow out of the undesigned fund balance on the municipal side unless it is needed. Unless there's something above what the school budget is accounting for, paying for. And if the need is there, the conditions are met, and if the municipal undesigned fund monies flow to the school department and they're expended, and they do not spend down the million dollars that's in the undesigned fund balance on their side, next, next year, they're going to be coming to the table with a healthy, not super healthy, but a healthy undesigned fund balance and may, given circumstances in the future, may have to draw some of that down at that point to to offset future property tax burden. Right, this is all very fluid, I mean, it's not, it's not them and us. We've got to figure out how to, how to work all of our accounts. And if I thought that having more money in one account than the other, having more ballast water on one side of the the ship, to go back to last night's analogy, was going to flip the ship, was going to make us, make us heal over too much, we wouldn't be doing it. We're not, we're not compromising the integrity of the overall fiscal system this way.
No, and I, and I get that, I'm just thinking, if if you can lower the property tax transfer this year, then that's going to be a lower starting point next year.
Yeah. This is Rob Zernetsky again, I I understand that perspective and that is an institutional and a human issue. We've got to work through that.
I I think that's it.
This is, this is Linda Savistano Superintendent, I just wanted to share. First, I I want to reiterate, Rob clearly is showing that we work together and will continue to work together. We will not be working in isolation by any means in what is truly a fluid situation. I'm not sure if folks listened to the governor's message today. I also had a meeting this morning, I, so I heard twice today that while we thought we were going to find out if we were returning to school this year or not, we today were kind of given an indication that there's still a possibility that we would return in June. So while we're talking about transportation for this year and transportation for next year, I understand to, you know, where, I think I want to make sure we are clear that that's two very different conversations and I understand the confusion and the merge, merge I'm hearing. This year's transportation could be, the million that we're talking about may not exist if we did return. And my understanding is the governor sharing, sharing her concern for childcare. At the end of the day, the schools provide a level of childcare. So she's looking at models, the models, um, how, as she looks at peaks and it is, while she, we had a meeting with her Tuesday, she said that it kind, it felt, she said she was looking both ways and then today it kind of swayed back to another way. I don't, you know, so with that said, we're not going to know more until next week. So the timeline is again impacted for understanding if this projected these projected dollars on transportation for FY 20, if what what that amount really is.
Okay.
Thank you, Linda, Zach, your hand is up as well.
Yeah, I just wanted to provide an update to let the town, Mr. Sweet know and the town know that, you know, the town, on the town side, we are tracking and putting together all expenses related to the COVID pandemic and submitting that to Rhode Island EMA. They will then take it from all the cities and towns, kind of package the state as a whole, is my understanding. Captain Healy is spearheading that project for us. And as updates become available, right now, it's fill out an, we're filling out the application, completing that and submitting it to the state and then the state will kind of put together a package as a whole. We don't know what the reimbursements will look like and what the allocation will look like until we get more definition from the, from the federal level back down from the state.
Thanks, Zach. All right, see some more hands up, next is Jocelyn, yes.
Good evening. I just have a couple of clarifying questions. The 2% property transfer is around 1.2 million, is that right? Rob, I saw you nod, 1.1 million in savings from transportation, is that about right? Yeah, got you on that. What's in the town's undesigned funds, please?
13.6, I believe.
No. No.
Yes.
Just making sure. So, you know, I've spoken about this before in front of this town council, and y'all know who my husband is, and we've done a lot of hurricane reclamation. And the Houston homeless are pretty famous. Houston suffered $125 billion of loss. And much of that needed to be carried by the municipal cities. And towns had to repair their own homes and their own capital buildings and their own streets and their own water. And Florida was decimated by both Harvey and Sandy. You're holding on to $13.6 million that is a sacred trust by the taxpayers of this town, that you will take care of us if there is a crisis, a crisis that destroys our homes, our infrastructure, our town properties, which we carry a great deal of. So, you need to think about that, and I'm not addressing the school committee here. I'm addressing the town council. The town council is ultimately responsible for the funds transferred to the school committee, period. You need to protect the sacred trust that the taxpayers of this town have placed in that undesignated fund. And come November, frankly, some of you or all of you may not even be here. So, please don't take what we have worked so hard to preserve and protect to take care of us in the event of a true emergency. Thank you very much.
And we have a phone number ends in 418 next. So, you may need to hit star nine to unmute yourself. And please state your name for the record.
Hi, this is Christie Fish. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Hi, everyone. I also want to extend my gratitude to everyone that has spoken tonight. And the last caller actually spoke to part of the reason why I'm calling, but not the exact purpose for why I'm calling. I feel, as a parent, an enormous responsibility to speak on behalf of other parents that are not attached to these committees. But as parents that have kids that are in these schools, I have three myself, one of which is in special education, and I feel the need to speak on behalf of that as well. Joe, you brought up something really interesting tonight, a word that stood out to me. I wrote it down in bold letters because I wanted to come back to it. You spoke about the enormous amount of risk that is attached to the town when it's concerning budget. And so, I want to take that word "risk," and I want to apply it equally to our children's education, because there is also risk involved with that. And I think that that's really important to understand. And I also think it's really important to understand that when we're talking about this budget that was referred to as the flush fund, which felt very disconcerting to me as a parent, this budget is attached to children, just like the town's budget is attached to the taxpayers. I am a taxpayer and I am a parent of a child, okay? So, both of those budgets are concerning to me. But just as we are trying and emphasizing the budget of the town, and I know people in the school committee and Linda are, and people on the town council as well, are thinking about our kids and both budgets, the town council, you also have this amazing responsibility to think about both of these budgets, but also you get to vote on how the final budget is allocated to the schools. That's a huge responsibility, and I just hope that you consider both things when you're thinking about this, because there is equal amount of risk involved to not approving the budget. We have to think about that. And I understand we are in uncertain times, and it's uncomfortable for everybody. But it would be socially irresponsible of me, as a parent, representing other parents, especially parents of children in special education during this time, to not speak up and say, "There is equal risk involved." So, I appreciate all the points that are being brought up. But when you are thinking about this a couple of weeks from now, I am just asking you to please honor every person and every population that is involved with this, and think about it equally, even though people that are in the school district or parents and children may be less of a population or demographic. It doesn't mean the risk isn't just as important and influential. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the line, or on the queue, is Rich Morrissey. You should be good to go.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
So, Rich Morrissey, I just wanted to address a comment I think you made, Rob, relative to, I don't know if it was Jason or Ralph's suggestion about using the, whatever the potential savings are from transportation this year against next year's program budget versus unfunded area. If we consider doing that versus transferring the full 2% PP, property tax transfer, then we don't increase the budget year over year to the school committee, and we start at a better position next year as we go into the budgeting cycle. We aren't 2% up from this year, if I understand the dialogue correctly relative to the commitment the town has to maintain once we set and approve a budget for the school committee. It sounds to me, given what I'm hearing last night, tonight, and previous discussions, that all other departments in the town are looking at making some potential cut, given the current economic situation. I think we are months to years away from recovering versus weeks. And to not consider every opportunity from a financial management perspective for the town to spend where appropriate, as appropriate, it doesn't make sense to me that we would increase the school budget necessarily, the 2%. They can still get their 2% increase by using most or all of the excess from this year's budget, when we know what that is at the end of the year, depending on whether or not they go back to school in June. Maybe it only ends up being 500,000, 600,000, not 1.1 million. But I also heard you say last night, and I think the proposal is very smart, to pay the budget in increments to the school system and not pay it in one lump sum. And maybe we should consider doing more than just two, but three or four, and spread those payments out in a way that allow us to adjust more fluidly with the economics of what's happening, with better understanding what state funding or federal funding might come back to the town to repay what we've had for out-of-pocket costs. But I do think there is, when you made the comment about it didn't matter which unfunded bucket the money is in, if I understand correctly, and if I don't, I would appreciate the correction. But I do think there's an impact, because we do a 2% increase on the budget for the school committee this year that we are then obligated to next year. So, that's just a thought, and I guess a question to make sure that my thinking isn't derailed or misunderstood.
Thank you, Rich.
This is Rob Zarnetsky. I don't think that your reasoning is wrong. I'm not sure, given, again, that we've got declining student population, that it necessarily has a definitive impact. But I think your logic is correct.
Okay. So, again, I see opportunity. What I saw from you last night, I thought, was really a good opportunity for the town council and the town to be more reactive and more creative in the way we manage the funds of the town for the entire population, not just the town, not just the seniors, not just the rec centers, not just the medical, not just the school system, but for the entire town. And I think it gives us a lot more flexibility, as you noted last night, in making more than one payment to the school committee as we understand what happens economically over these next three to six to nine months and a year. So, I just feel like if we would, as we've asked all the other departments to do, or as you have asked all the other departments to do with budget reduction assessments, and it was nice to see tonight, Linda, that the school committee's done something similar, I think proposing a level budget for the school committee this year, but using those excess funds that come out of this year's situation, again, not knowing whether it's the 1.1 or something less, to apply to the programs we want to promote next year versus into an unfunded account, make more sense to me than holding it, and I know people don't like the term, but holding it as a flush fund. Thank you.
All right. Next on our list is Tara. I mean, imagining Tara Aperson. Not work for me. Is... I'm not... I'm trying to allow Tara to talk, and I'm getting a pop-up that's stopping that. There you are. All right, Tara, I think you can speak now. If you will unmute yourself, there you go.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Um, so, first of all, thank you. Thank all of you. Thank you for the hard work that's gone into this. This has definitely been one of the best budget processes I've ever seen, and I'm very encouraged by everyone's thoughtfulness, especially in a time of high stress. From what I've seen, you've all been entirely cooperative and collaborative. So, that's been really comforting. So, you know, I'm personally affected by this crisis. I, and it most certainly is a crisis. I am still working, but I have a child at home, as many do, that needs support. My husband's been laid off. I'm also a homeowner and therefore a taxpayer. And obviously, I'm concerned about finances, but I 100% support the school budget. So, I know that next year, when school resumes, whether it's virtual, hopefully not, or in person, or some combination of both, we will need our programs and our personnel more than ever. And I absolutely think it's a reasonable request to fund our schools. I appreciate the plan to fund transportation, and therefore, the property tax transfer increase as needed monthly. That seems like a good, solid plan that addresses everybody's needs. But if school does resume and we're able to occupy the physical space, I would advocate that, at that point, the school budget request is fully funded. So, this budget was really incredibly well thought out. Our students, when they return to school next year, deserve the programs and the supports that have been planned for and budgeted for for next year. I really appreciated Rob's message last night that a cut of $1 million would be detrimental to programs, but it wouldn't make a substantial difference for taxpayers. The message that we don't want to layer a programmatic crisis on top of an economic crisis also really resonated with me. And I'll forever have the steady ship analogy on my mind after last night's presentation. I agree that we don't need to panic and jump to the lifeboats right off the bat. So, I think the value and importance of our schools has really been highlighted in the past few weeks. Public education is a social good, and I think we've seen so much more of what our public education provides for our students than just education. It's social services, it's connection. There's just so much there. And they deserve appropriate funding. Our kids deserve appropriate funding. The budget presented by the school committee should be fully funded. Less transportation, if that's not needed. And I really trust, after watching all of the dialogue for the last couple of nights, that you all are going to be watching what is and isn't needed in our budget. So, and when it comes to what we're going to do with savings from this year and why it should or should not go into the fund balance, I wholeheartedly agree with Mr. Zarnetsky when he said, and this is a quote, this is the fun part about doing these Zoom meetings. You can pause and write things down. But the quote was, "The idea that there's going to be money to work with to preserve an education program that's effective next year is an important concept for us to be working with." So, I mean, I just, I think that's so well said. So, thank you again for the productive discussion last night and tonight.
Next, we have another phone caller, last three digits, 803. Maybe it's the same number.
So, I have to hit unmute?
You're good. You were good for a second there.
Sorry. Can you hear me, Eagle?
Yes.
All right, Laura Robot. This is muted. Um, I actually think that the town council meeting is the perfect platform to say that, for years, we've been going to these meetings, and we've been constantly compared to other districts in the state and been under scrutiny. And I just want to make sure, you know, I try to listen to the meetings, but for the first time, SK is being highlighted as the model for distant learning and virtual learning, not only in Rhode Island, but by neighboring states, states that our scores are constantly compared to. And we've been highlighted. And I think that that just is a moment to reflect that our teachers have given so much of themselves in the past few weeks, months, really, their time and energy to the students and families. And as a taxpayer, I think that our citizens should know that SK is being celebrated and recognized at a higher level. And our educators don't really want to be recognized. They honestly just want to get back into the classroom with the kids where they're most comfortable. And so, as we think about the budget, and we're wondering if the money's going to be spent, it's a good investment. Our past funding is showing itself. We're saying that what you've done in the past is paying off right now. We're bearing the fruits of that labor and that, those energies. And as much as we do need to nickel and dime a budget, for years, we've been saying it takes collaboration. And I've been at a town council meeting before saying, "We live in a dynamic community. We can do this. We will collaborate." And right now, it's happening. A Zoom meeting with both the school committee and the town council actively pursuing a workable budget in a pandemic, supporting our kids and their families. SK families right now are safe. We feel safe. We're home with our kids, knowing that they're getting what they need through the school district that you support, that you, the taxpayer, are supporting. And honestly, our neighboring towns, I don't think that they're saying that. So, as a parent, as a person in our community, I'm proud, and unfortunately, we're in a pandemic, but I'm more proud to be part of this community, part of the learning community, but SK in itself, our budget dollars as a whole, I think, are the investments paying off. So, I just want to thank everybody all around. That's it.
Thank you, Laura. All right. So, there are no other hands raised. Are there other people who would like to say anything at this point? Gary Chapman, you are on. I think I'm having...
Okay, I got it now.
You're there now.
Okay. All right, I had just a few questions. Joe Veely had asked- Joe Veely had asked, um, the question about, um, i- if we use the undesignated fund balance to, to, um, to cover the 2%. That, that's where we're going to start next year and, and, and that money has not been raised by taxes. So I, I don't think I heard an answer to that. I mean, where are we, you know, maybe Zach, you could answer that question. Wh- where is, where, where are we with that next year? When, when the budget comes up, um, we're a million dollars in the hole as far as taxpayers are concerned?
So this is Rob Zarnetsky, Gary. I, I, again, I think that the logic that Joe and our last caller on this subject use is, is not incorrect. I think that logic is right. When, when you say that you're establishing a baseline for the community level of effort by taking it from the town undesigned funded pose to taking it from the, uh, school undesigned funded balance. That's a correct assertion.
Yeah, but I'm not talking about that, Rob. I'm talking about when, when, when it comes to next year's budget. We will, we will have raised a million dollars less from taxpayers that now we have to fill from taxpayers. Is that correct?
So. What we are doing this year would be maintaining the tax levy. It'll be level. We're not going to, we're not going to change, um, the taxes that anybody's paying. And we're not going to change the, uh, taxes in aggregate. There will be hopefully some growth in the, uh, grand list or in the, in the tax role. No, we're not necessarily a million dollars in the hole. But again, the logic's not wrong. You're moving in that direction.
Okay, so in other words, we will be a million dollars in taxes less next year that we will have to raise.
I, I'm almost. Yep. I, I assert that for al- almost certainly that it'll be less than a million. If it's a million that you're, you're dealing with.
Then we still have to deal with whatever increase the budget is looking for on top of that.
That would be correct.
Okay, then the, the other question I, I would, I would have is, is, um, I, I think there is a difference using one, one undesigned funded balance versus the other. In, in the fact that when the school department realizes that savings and puts it into their undesigned funded balance, the town has no control over how they spend that money. When, when, when they use it to, 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 to cover the 2% increase, then that, that is something that taxpayers doesn't have to, and we can keep, the town can keep their undesigned funded balance, which they do have control over how they spend it. Now, I would, I would go so far as to say that doing it that way would be the best. Because then if you still feel that there was a problem, the town has an undesigned funded balance they can help the schools with, that, that really what you're doing in reverse. You're, you're, you're giving it to them and then set saying you're going to take it back if they, if they don't need it. But why not let them use their own and undesigned funded balance to, to cover their budget? And then the town keeps theirs, it, which they have control over, which they, they know how to spend the, the way they want to, and they don't have to worry about not telling the school how to spend it. Does that make sense to you?
So, yes, I mean, that is the logic that is applied everywhere I've ever been, where there is a school, uh, budget separate from a town budget. One of the things that I think is going to be very important for the community and for communities in general, uh, over the course of the next year, as we deal with COVID-19 ramifications and, and, you know, the legacy of this problem, uh, is that we're working together. This is, in, in some ways, in goodwill and team, uh, between two parts of government that don't always work well together. Uh, I, I think that part of what we're doing here through the budget exercise is not just working with numbers. It's working with the people associated with those numbers. And, and figuring out ways to work together has a value greater than what shows up on the ledger.
Okay, so then that's my, my next question is we've always dealt with the town and the schools as two separate budgets. And we do a tax transfer. Is, is, it seems to me like what you're trying to propose here, Rob, is that, that you, you no longer want to do the tax transfer, that you really sound, sounds like you, you're doing a little hybrid now. And you're going to i- incorporate the school budget within to the town budget. And, and because if you're going to take tax transfer away from them and put it into the town budget's undesigned funded potentially next year, then really the school budget is now not the school budget. It's, it's, it's incorporated into the town budget.
Yeah, so I don't have any grand master plan. There's nothing, there's no, you know, diabolical scheme that.
I'm not saying there is, but I'm.
No, I know. I'm, I'm being somewhat facetious, but there isn't. And, and the other element here is that the chart here in South Kingstown makes it clear that the school committee has the authority to determine how school spend it. Cooperation doesn't need to, to come at the expense of that educational control. The administrative level cooperation that I'm hoping to build this year and in the years, you know, beyond this year, should augment and facilitate better finances and hopefully better programs across the entire environment for the town.
Cause you know, you know, even a- as stated in the town charter, you know, even, even petitions to the budget, they, they have to be different for the town and the schools. They, they're, they're separate questions. You can't, you can't meld the two of them together. So, you know, that, that, that seems to me that the town charter has always wanted the, the school and the town budgets to be separate. And, and then my, my next question would be the, the, you know, concerning what you had proposed earlier. Um, I was wondering if you could go through that again, uh, as far as how you can go to petition. I'm a little bit confused on, on how that happens. You know, you mentioned the 25 signatures, that's the initial petition. But, you know, there's 200 signatures on, on the petition to the all day referendum. And how, how, how would that work? And, and how do we, how do we, what do we, do we, does, does someone get a petition that's a PDF that they can email to someone? Or, or, and it comes back through them? Or how, how does that work?
Sure, uh, Mr. President, if you'd like, I can bring that slide back up and on the screen.
Uh, before, uh, you do that, Rob, um, I did see that Marianne had her hand raised and potentially to answer a question that Gary asked. Here.
Something that, um, Rob did say while he was responding to him. In the past, um, as it comes to the school fund balance, I've had dialogues with the previous town manager as to how we would use our fund balance. It's always been a collaborative discussion. And I, I just want the message to be that we don't operate in a vacuum, that the dialogue and the continued cooperation we've had, um, on the town, the school side, at least during my complete tenure here, which is now pushing six years, is, is, is beyond the, what I've seen in other places. And, and I know I have peers throughout the state that, that I hear something very different. So even when, um, Rob was thinking about, um, what he was going to oppose to this, uh, town council as relates to our property tax transfer, he took the time to call Linda and I ahead of time and said, I need to chat with you folks about this before I presented. So I, I don't want folks to walk away and think that, um, especially when Gary said that, well, it's with the school then, and, and you have no control over it. Yeah, state statute talks about that, town charter talks about that, but there's always a give and take. And, and Rob and I, since he started, had some very good dialogue. And sometimes we agree on everything and sometimes we don't agree. And sometimes we agree to disagree, but the dialogue is always there and always continues. So I, I just want to be sure that, that folks get that.
Thank you, Marianne. And, uh, Rob, if you wanted to bring up that slide.
All right. What we are contemplating again, and as I mentioned earlier this evening, I'm still waiting on, uh, final sign off by the solicitor on this. So, um, we're not, I, I'm not publishing this as, as a final directive. But what we're contemplating is this, that in order to, uh, demonstrate that you've got the signatures, whether it's the 25 or the 200, you can show an original petition with an original signature, a photocopy of a petition form with an original signature, or an electronic copy in JPEG, GIF, or PDF format of a petition form, which includes any mark indicating that the elector, uh, wants, wants to serve, that mark wants to be used as his or her signature. And that's to deal with the fact that you sometimes see people, you know, print their name in a funny font because they, they can't sign the document. But any mark that they make on an electronic file will be taken as a signature so long as we also have the name and a phone number to confirm the authenticity of that mark. Signatures do not need to be on a single form. If it's 25 signatures, 25 sheets of paper coming in all at once will do. If it's 200 signatures that you need, 200 sheets, 200 copies of that petition coming in at the same time will suffice.
So I, I guess I'm, I'm, I'm trying to look at the mechanics of this. I mean, how do we, how, how does this happen? I mean, they're going to have to, to, to print it out and then, and then sign it and then somehow fax, fax it back to themselves or to someone else? Or how's this going to work?
So any electronic file with any mark that's intended to be your signature will be taken as your signature so long as they've got their name and a phone number so that we can confirm the mark.
So we can attach the, the, the petition to a, to a, a document, I guess, and have them just sign the document or?
Yep, you could send, so yes, I mean, I can imagine it in all of these ways. Imagine that you send a PDF to 25 people. They use their Adobe editing software and put a little squiggle on it, put their, type their name and address and phone number and email it back to you. That is a completed petition form.
I, I'm sure you, you know that there's probably, you know, not a lot of people that, that have Adobe software and know how to do all that kind of stuff, you know?
So another way they could do it is print it out on their, on their, their printer, sign it and take a photograph of it with their cell phone and email you the photograph. Any digital form that is a standard form, JPEG, GIF, or PDF.
Okay.
Acceptable. We can't have formats that we don't, you know, have ready access to. We can't have exotic, you know, strange Unix based, uh, forms that we can't, you know, read. But so long as the standard, uh, form, and we can read it, and they've got their mark and they've got a phone number so we can confirm that that's what they mean, it'll be accepted.
Okay, I can appreciate that. Then, then you, you didn't talk about the, the, if, if there, if there is a successful petition for, for the all day referendum, how is that going to take place?
Uh, we were puzzling through this today and, um, we would in all likelihood end up, uh, doing an in-person, um, polling place. We'd pick the biggest space we could and we'd move tables and, and polling stations as far apart as we can.
And, and i- is that something that the governor will allow to happen? Because I, I don't believe they're doing that for the presidential primary.
So we don't know, we're still waiting on, and I'll let Susan speak to this if, if you'd like, Susan.
Actually, Gary, we are holding a presidential preference primary on June 2nd, in person at one polling location in the town. We are looking at using the gymnasium at the recreation center where we would have lots of space to separate the poll workers as well as the voters standing in line. Um, as you know, we're doing an extensive mail ballot campaign for that election, which will hopefully keep the numbers of actual voters down on that election day. I don't think that that's going to be a big part of a budget referendum. It would probably be just a normal all day referendum probably that same location with the spacing that we would be eligible to use. I'm told that the gymnasium is about 18,000 square feet, which gives plenty of room to have people come in and line up and space out the poll workers.
Okay.
Where we're at right now, that could change as everything else has been changing on a daily and weekly basis.
Okay, so, so then I guess, uh, at this point in time, you'll just, we'll just, people will have to just check back with you. Cause I don't think we have any, any other meetings other than the, uh, the budget approval meeting, right on the 27th?
Correct, but you could not even file a referendum petition until after that final budget is adopted, when we know in fact what the budgeted amounts are going to be.
Right, right. Okay, well, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Gary, uh, all right, uh, Doral Beasley. I have. Tried to unmute you. Doral, have you tried to unmute yourself? Can anybody else help me unmute Doral?
He appears to have himself muted because I cannot unmute him.
Yeah. Doral, can you, uh, try to unmute yourself on your lower left-hand side of the screen? Should see a little microphone.
If Doral is on a phone, he'll need to start.
Can you hear me now?
A little bit of feedback, yeah, okay.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yeah. Can you hear me?
Yep.
All right. Okay. My first question is for, um, Ms. Crawford. About six weeks ago, I sent you guys a request. I wanted to find out how much money came off the books when you dropped the 31 FTEs from last year to this year. And you sent me the answer, it was a little over $3 million. So. So we had last year's budget. And then this year we have, we start the year with 31 fewer people and yet $3 million in salary and benefits comes off the budget. But how does, how is that affected by the maintenance of effort thing? Because $3 million is actually way more money than you would need for your contract salary and benefit increases from one year to the next.
The maintenance and efforts has to do with the property tax transfer and not the school budget.
Okay, but. Your school budget, between last year and this year, you as, you asked for a million dollars more in the property trans, tax transfer. And you're asking for another million dollars increase for next year. But for this year, when you ask for a million dollars increase in the property tax transfer, you had $3 million that came off your books. How's that possible?
Doral, I'm not sure I follow your question, number one. And number two, keep in mind, in that same two-year period of time, you had a drop in state, state revenues of 1.4, approximately 1.4 million dollars. The property tax transfer that the town has given us over the last number of years has been mainly to support the drop in the state aid. Stop it, dropping a state aid started around $300,000 to $400,000. In the most recent years, it's been up to $700,000 a year.
No, I, I, I know that. No, I, I, I know that. But I go back to the fact that the money, that $3 million that came out, it comes out of salary and benefits. I'm not talking about anything else. I'm talking about salary and benefits from year to year. When you take, if, when you took the three, when, when I took the $3 million out of the budget and then so I, so I subtracted the $3 million for the people that left from the salary and benefits that you had used the, that, that years, that prior year's budget. You take that $3 million out. Now you have a new amount, salary and benefits amount, $3 million less. Now you, now you would then apply your salary and benefit increases from your contracts for that amount of money. And when you do that, you don't come anywhere near what you asked for in salary and benefits for this year or for next year. Let between this year, there's 800,000 some dollars more in there. And for next year, you're asking like almost 1.3 or 1.4 million dollars more. Because you, when you took, when you took the, the, when 331 people left and $3 million went out the window, you didn't reset, you didn't, you didn't reset your salary and benefits lines in your budget to reflect that, to then start the next year. That's what, that's the way, that's the way I see it. And, um, it's got nothing to do, it's got nothing to do with how much money we're getting from the state.
Dorell, I, I'm not following your logic. And keep in mind.
Yeah, that's why I wanted to, yeah, okay, go ahead.
Yep.
Go ahead.
Okay.
No, I'm listening.
So teacher salary alone, couple of last fiscal year and the year before was about $33 million. If you add a 2% increase to that, and then you add the step increases to that, those are the numbers you've got to consider when you're taking into consideration. Step increases are statutorily required. So yes, the salaries will increase or the math will not work out exactly the way you're doing it because there's other things that factor into it.
I wish, I wish I could come over and talk to you at the place. This is so frigging frustrating. All right. All right. So here's my next question. So last night I, I mentioned that in the 23 districts in Massachusetts and Rhode Island that have budgets between $60 million and $69 million, the average of $64 million. Those 23 other districts for that amount of money educate 4,035 students on average. We have 2,800 students. How is that possible? How is it possible that we're spending the same amount of money as the other 23 districts in two states? And we're educating 1,200 less students?
Doral, I, you know, I, I can open that to other people, but I don't think we're gonna be able to answer that question.
I, I know. And here's the thing, I, I, you, you don't want to answer the question. Okay? That's the real reason. All right. So there's a lot of back patting tonight. A lot of people, a lot of back patting. I, I, I think I'm gonna, I'm sorry, I'm not gonna be one of those people tonight. Okay. What I noticed in the budget document itself was there, there was no, there wasn't one mention of, of test scores for, for the RICAS, PSAT. The SAT, there was, well, SAT, you had thinking about growth, but. So here's my next question. All right. So on page, I think it was page 20, 24, I think it was of the, of the budget document. You have this little block in there and it's, and it's, uh, says, it's the one where you're comparing us to, uh, but eight other districts. So it says here, we're just like these other with a number of FTE, certified employees. You got Barrington, North Kingstown, East Crinix, Westerly, Bristol Warren, Lake and Central Falls and S.T. All right. So what I did was I went and looked at all, all their scores for all their schools, for all those districts, magically, actually to the whole state. The scores on, on the, the, the star report. So the star report, when it comes out for in, in individual school, takes into account for that school, the, the, the scores for ELA, the scores for math. And then depending on whether or not you have some subgroups in there that need extra, extra help, you have some other things that factor into the total score for, for the school. So that's how either, you know, you, either a one-star school, if you're, you know, there's very few of those in the state, or you can be as good as a five-star school now. So if the budget that you, if the budget that you guys are talking about tonight, if it passes, if it's, if it's approved, and if that's the, that's the budget we're gonna work with in the fall, for the first time in this, in the history of this town, the per pupil cost is gonna be in excess over, a little over $23,000 a student, which will put us, because I think I figured it out. We've been, I don't know what they're doing down in there against it, but it's, they're, they're like $25,000 a student. But of course, they, they do their own bussing. So does Westerly. But it's Westerly, South Kingstown and there against it. The three most expensive, uh, school districts in the state for, per pupil expense now. So $23,000 per student. And when I looked at those scores for, for, for those eight, on that page 29 or 24, I'm thinking, so you have the four things that said, we're just like those. So I, I looked at all. So I looked at every district in the state that had a K to 12 program. And so if you, if you had a five-star school, they got a five points and then all the way down. So when, so in that little, in that little block there, the eight things, you, you say, we're all, we're just as good as, or just the same as all those with our certified FTEs. We're next to last in our star ratings for our schools last year and this year. So our, so if, if the perfect score would be a five, okay, if, if you had, every school had, was a five-star school, you'd have a five. And if every school was like awful, you'd have a one. All right. So Barrington has the highest score in the state because they have five, five-star schools and a four-star schools. So they had a 4.83 average for their whole district. And the lowest score in that group was Central Falls at 1.6. The only, Central Falls was the only school district on that little box there that you have, that we beat. Okay. So we have, so, so last year we had one four-star school, five four-stars, five three-stars, uh, four three-star schools and two, two-star schools. The two, two-star schools this year came up to three. So this year we have a four-star school and all the rest are threes. Now, we have the second highest cost per student in the state. How's that possible? We, we're drowning, we're drowning in, we're drowning in teachers. We have, we have, we have a, we have FTE certified people. Uh, you know, in abundance of them because we had a four, 5.6 to 1 students who employed this, uh, average in our elementary schools last year. So we have all sorts of people in there that are teaching our kids. How is it possible with all those people and with all this money that we're paying, that we only have one four-star school and six three-star schools? I, I want you to, somebody to answer the question.
Okay. I, I think it's fair. You posited a question now. I think I'll open it up for, uh, school folks to answer that. But I'm, that's the last question for tonight. Okay, Doral? Had a lot of time to, to consider your input and, uh, I feel.
I know, I, I know, I know you don't like to hear this because I'm getting to, I'm getting to the crux of the problem. That's what, what it is.
I think I understand your, you know, in general, I hear the point. We have too many employees in the school system. Um, and they're not getting the results that you would like to see.
And I don't know. They're, they're your kids. Your, your kids are in the schools.
I, I understand that. Yes. All right. So I'm gonna open it. So I'll, I'll let the question stand there if somebody would like to answer it. Uh, and then, uh, if there's anybody else who would like to speak, please raise your hand.
So we at the school committee have gone over the accountability results, the star ratings, and analyzed the many components. What the results you are referring to are a reflection of last year and the year before. Um, we did have the Department of Education come work with the leadership team for a two and a half hour meeting and unpack the results with us. Each principal has worked with their staff to unpack the results to understand them. Um, I don't take the results lightly, although I don't believe that our community is defined by snapshots of data only. Um, we, I promise you though, that we will work to do, um, the best we can and to make everyone proud. And I believe that we are proving that right now because we are in the utmost of challenging times on very dark days, trying to work to lift a community. It's not something I take lightly and I will never, even on the best of days. So it's hard for me to understand the exact details of what happened over the previous 24 months before I arrived. I will own these days today. Um, and I do own the previous days, but I'm not, um, going to be able to unpack the answers for you in the way you'd like me to. But, um, I promise you and everyone that we are, um, working to improve in all ways, not just in the star ratings that reflect staff attendance, student attendance, subgroup data, graduation rates, dropout rates, um, and assessment results. So we will, um, I am confident that you will see improvements. I, I am. Um, so I'm sorry that we're not, I'm not giving you the details you want, but I understand the essence of what you are um, trying to point out to us. And it's again, not something I take lightly or dismiss.
Thank you, Linda. All right. Is there anybody else who would like to speak at this point from the community? All right. Seeing none. Uh, are there any final comments from, from folks on the council or committee on the panelists? Oh. Right. Well, again, thank you for, um, being a part of this meeting. Once again, I think the discussion was informative. Uh, you know, the next step is of course the April 27th meeting for the town council when we'll consider, uh, final budget adoption. Uh, and we'll see if petitions are filed in the lead up to that and, you know, what happens afterwards. I want to express my thanks to Rob and Linda for, uh, working together collaboratively throughout this process and, uh, dealing with, you know, unprecedented times. Uh, I think we've arrived at a reasonable, uh, budgetary solution to, to sort of the problems that face us and the, you know, the everyday tasks of, of running the town as we always have. So again, thank you and thank you for everybody who called in today. Uh, you know, this is still an ongoing conversation. So please feel free to email us, call us, uh, and, and let us know what we can do better. With that, um, do I hear a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close the public hearing. This is Debbie Kelso.
Back in by Bryant.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That motion carries. Uh, I, I think, uh, one thing that I forgot to do last night is seek a motion to adjourn. Uh, so I would actually request that now.
To adjourn.
Second.
All right. Very good. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And that motion carries as well. Uh, so we're all free to go about our business. Thank you again. It's around 10 o'clock, I believe. And I appreciate all your patience.
Good night. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Meeting over.
Good night.